President.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Kim Cottisbody as Board President.
Mr. Mustaral.
Second.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
This is Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Congratulations.
I'm going to call for nominations for Vice President. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Mr. John Sabrana on his birthday.
Happy birthday. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Mustaral.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries. Yes, we do. Luz Vasquez?
Luz Vasquez, former parent of student, but still a very active community member. And I just want to take this time to say how proud I am. We have an amazing board with some wonderful people in our community that I know are going to do a great job for this district. And one of the things that I value about you all, you're such an important part of what families value here. I know personally you've been a vital part of the, some of the concerns that we brought to this board. And together we walk, we work to reach a consensus as to what is best for our children and for the district. And for that, I thank you. I have the fullest confidence in, and you find people on this board right now that it is going to be a great year. Congratulations. God bless you. And I just pray that God guides you and leads you in making the best decisions for our district. Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members and friends. Tony Cotto from Chestnut Assembly of God in Vineland. I just am here tonight to say congratulations. We're so excited about this year, excited about what God wants to do through all of you in this board. Know that we are rooting for you, we are praying for you, and we know that God is going to use you in this school district and in this area in just a mighty way. You have our support, and you have especially our prayer support. Thank you for all your hard work, and we are behind you. God bless you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Thanks for the offer. I'll be brief, but I would like to take a moment to congratulate our newest school board members on this undertaking. This is a significant position. As most of you know, this is where I began my elected career, and people often underestimate just how important the role of a school board member is. You are the first line of defense for the children in this city, and that truly is a role of a gladiator, if there ever was one, in my opinion. So thank you for stepping up and making this commitment. You will have some wonderful times, some good laughs, some trying times, and some disagreements, but always try to remain focused on the fact that it's all about the kids and always all about our staff that are here to take care of our children. But I applaud you for stepping forward and doing that. I applaud all board members that have served over the years, and those of you that are continuing your service now, I thank you for your commitment to the children, and just know that the city stands ready and committed to continue our relationship with the district, as it has certainly grown in the last number of years, and we have truly cherished that. As I continue to serve as a mayor, we will be here for you. Please don't ever hesitate to call on myself, council, or our administration. So thank all of you. Happy New Year to all of you. God bless you. God bless your families. God bless staff. And Central Office, thank you for all your hard work. And, you know, the couple more gray hairs, although the ladies cover them up a lot better than we do. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hassan Hamidel. I'd like to congratulate the board, newest members, and thank the previous board members for the great work that I've done in the community. I want to just give a special shout out to Mr. Harris, personal friend that watched grow up. I'm very, very happy to see him be a part of this process, and I know that he was going to bring a lot of fairness and integrity to the board, as you all have. Thank you very much for, for your continued good work, and God bless you all, and have a wonderful, wonderful session. Thank you.
Before we move any further, I would like to just welcome our two new board members, Mr. Harris, Mrs. Perez, and I'd like to welcome back Mr. Silva. We're all here for you. If you have any questions, our phones are always on. To the board members who are still here, we have a big job to do this year, as we do every year, and I want to thank everybody for all their participation and their assistance that we're going to need. So, were any questions you have, please just reach out. We're always here for you guys. Do you have any recommendations, Mr. Yano?
Yes. I would like to recommend for approval to the board, readoption of bylaws and policies, and acceptance of the 2024 annual school election results.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're at board member comments already. I'm going to go with Mr. Fioki.
Good evening. I just want to welcome Mr. Harris, Mrs. Perez. I know you both are going to be valuable members of this board, and I look forward to working with you. And welcome back, Mr. Silva. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Harris and Ms. Perez. Welcome to the board. Looking forward to working with you. Mr. Silva is always great to work with you. Glad to have you back. Looking forward to a great year with a great board, great new faces on the board, ready to work. We have a lot of work to do with our superintendent, and I'm excited about the work that we're going to do. Glad to see our former superintendent here, Dr. Gruccio, and some other members of the public that we're glad to see tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Bono?
Good evening. To Mr. Harris, to Donna, to Perez, and Alex Silva, thank you, and welcome to the board. It's an honor to serve with you, and I look forward to a great year ahead. We have a lot to do and looking forward to working with you guys. I'm always here if you need me, just like our president, Cottisbody, said. Any questions or anything I can do for you, please don't hesitate. Good luck. Thank you.
Mrs. Perez?
Good evening. I just want to say thank you for the warm welcome. Thank you for those that have reached out, and I'm looking forward, as I always say, I don't know what I don't know yet, but I'm willing to learn, roll up my sleeves, and get in the mix and figure out what is the best thing for the students of Vineland, New Jersey. And that's why we're here, for the students of Vineland, New Jersey, and the staff, and making sure that we're on the right trajectory to have a wonderful, wonderful year. So I am looking forward to working with all of you.
Mr. Rivera?
I will take my allotted three. Five. Good evening. I'd like to welcome Mrs. Perez and Mr. Harris onto the board. It's always a, you know, a great time when we see individuals in the community step up and wanting to serve, knowing that we don't get paid, knowing that, you know, it's long hours sometimes, but the reward is the smiles on these kids' faces every day you walk into one of those school buildings. Let me stop before I get emotional. It's, so that's the reward. And so I'd like to welcome you both. Mr. Silva, welcome again. I failed to congratulate him in the previous meeting, but congratulations and welcome back. I always, always a pleasure to work with Mr. Silva, and we always kind of bounce stuff off each other, and it's great that you're back. Mr. Harris, you have now been selected to sit next to me. So two things have to happen. Bring extra pens, because I'm always asking for a pen, because I always forget one, and tissues too sometimes. And as a rookie, you have to bring me coffee every meeting for the entire first year. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Welcome. Have a good night, everyone.
Mr. Harris?
Thank you. How much time do I have?
He yielded two minutes, so he's got seven now.
All right, it's going to be a while. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending. I come before you this evening filled with excitement on this new chapter and some nerves. Bear with me, and I'll go over my story, and I'll try to make it brief. A year ago, I retired from the Vineland Police Department, and I thought my service to the community was over at that time. I decided to run for school board. My entire adult life has been in serving my community, briefly in the Army and 30 years in law enforcement. Obviously, my time serving my community wasn't over. That's why I'm sitting here. So I would like to take a minute to thank the people that helped me. I would like to first thank my wife, Susan. I think she made it. She was at jury duty, and I told her, I know a few people at the county. I think I can get you out of it. And her response was, we don't get out of jury duty. So, so I think she's here. I'd like to thank my wife for standing by me and encouraging me, and everything that I've done over the years, over 30 years. And I appreciate the countless hours she dedicates to our family, and, and the countless hours she dedicates to our children. I'd like to thank my children, Shane Harris Jr., Shayna Harris, Crystal Broughton, Doran Diaz, and Sergeant First Class Jonathan Diaz, who should be here somewhere. Thank you for your service, son, and I appreciate you making it here with my granddaughters. Thank you to my father, Lemuel Harris Jr., who could not make it here. He's a little, he's elderly, so he couldn't make it down here from night, from North Jersey, but he will be watching this, and I wanted him to know that I appreciated him. I appreciate all the encouragement he's given me over the years, to include our long conversations after I graduated about me joining the military. I agreed with it, and my first day in basic training, when some large guy was yelling in my face, telling me to give him more push-ups, I wondered why I agreed to that conversation. But in any event, I appreciated my military service, where it taught me honor and duty to something greater than yourself, and I believe that contributed to me coming here. I'd like to thank my friends and campaign managers, Laney Bowers and Dave Cardana, for all the help you've given me over the years. I really appreciate it. I also feel like to thank you for the help you've given me during my campaign. I tried to follow every one of Dave's requests, but I had to draw the line on helicopters landing during the campaign video for school board. That seemed to be a little bit too much. I'd like to thank Dr. Mary Gruccio, Wendy Osborne, and Sue Chikini. These ladies have supported me throughout my entire juvenile career when I was a juvenile officer, and I won't forget it, and I appreciate it. I'd also like to thank someone who's not here, former board member, Tom Alrich, and the captain. At the time, he was my captain, and elevated me to position of juvenile sergeant, along with Chief Cottisbody. That assignment allowed me to work directly with the students and the staff and form positive relationships, so I appreciate that. All right, it's gonna be a while. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending. I come before you this evening filled with excitement on this new chapter and some nerves. Bear with me, and I'll go over my story, and I'll try to make it brief. A year ago, I retired from Vineland Police Department, and I thought my service to the community was over at that time. I decided to run for school board. My entire adult life has been in serving my community, briefly in the Army and 30 years in law enforcement. Obviously, my time serving my community wasn't over. That's why I'm sitting here. So I would like to take a minute to thank the people that helped me. I would like to first thank my wife, Susan. I think she made it. She was at jury duty, and I told her, I know a few people at the county. I think I can get you out of it. And her response was, we don't get out of jury duty. So, so I think she's here. I'd like to thank my wife for standing by me and encouraging me in everything that I've done over the years, over 30 years. And I appreciate the countless hours she dedicates to our family and, and the countless hours she dedicates to our children. I'd like to thank my children, Shane Harris Jr., Shayna Harris, Crystal Broughton, Dorian Diaz, and Sergeant First Class Jonathan Diaz, who should be here somewhere. Thank you for your service, son, and I appreciate you making it here with my granddaughters. Thank you to my father, Lemuel Harris Jr., who could not make it here. He's a little, he's elderly, so he couldn't make it down here from night, from North Jersey, but he will be watching this, and I wanted him to know that I appreciated him. I appreciate all the encouragement he's given me over the years, to include our long conversations after I graduated about me joining the military. I agreed with it, and my first day in basic training, when some large guy was yelling in my face, telling me to give him more push-ups, I wondered why I agreed to that conversation. But in any event, I appreciated my military service, where it taught me honor and duty to something greater than yourself, and I believe that contributed to me coming here. I'd like to thank my friends and campaign managers, Laney Bowers and Dave Cardana, for all the help you've given me over the years. I really appreciate it. I also feel like to thank you for the help you've given me during my campaign. I tried to follow every one of Dave's requests, but I had to draw the line on helicopters landing during the campaign video for school board. That seemed to be a little bit too much. I'd like to thank Dr. Mary Gruccio, Wendy Osborne, and Sue Chakini. These ladies have supported me throughout my entire juvenile career when I was a juvenile officer, and I won't forget it, and I appreciate it. I'd also like to thank someone who's not here, former board member Tom Alrich and the captain. At the time, he was my captain and elevated me to position of juvenile sergeant, along with Chief Cottisbotty. That assignment allowed me to work directly with the students and the staff and form positive relationships, so I appreciate that. I'd like to thank Lieutenant Lester Johnson, who couldn't be here, Sergeant Maruba Harris, Officer Colvin, Hassan Hamid. These gentlemen have stuck with me through good and bad times, and they are my counselors, and a lot of time they keep me grounded when I get a little too confident in the things that I'm doing. I could go on naming people, but I'm limiting my time. I've also learned the hard way to acknowledge too many people. You forget someone that's important. I was at an event where I was being honored, and in my excitement, I named everybody but my first supporter and first best friend, my brother Lemuel Harris. A year ago, I lost my brother during the campaign, and I thought about withdrawing my name from the campaign. However, I could hear Lemuel telling me, you don't start nothing that you're not going to finish. So here I am. And I'm going to skip ahead. To the voters, I thank you for all your support. I thank you for all the calls, texts, likes, requests for signs, even though I ran out, and I'm overwhelmed by the amount of votes I receive. I'm humbled that you took the time to cast your vote for me. I pledge to listen to your concerns and work hard to address the needs of the students and the staff. I've always been a person that's willing to sit down and talk to anybody from any side of the aisle. I would like to congratulate Mr. Silva and Ms. Perez also on winning the election. To the board members who I will be joining, or who I have joined, I would thank you for your continued service. I look forward to working with each of you to serve the students, staff, and voters of Vineland. My thought process is simple on this board. Leave the politics out and let you do what's best for the kids. Thank you.
Mr. Silva?
Yes. First off, I'd like to congratulate the newly elected board members, Mr. Shane Harris and Ms. Donna Perez. I'm looking forward to working with you both. Additionally, I personally would like to thank all of the voters who took the time to come out and who have supported me during this election process. I'm truly humble and grateful. As stated before, when I was previously elected, I will continue to be a strong advocate for open communication, transparency, and accountability. I believe everyone has a voice, and your voice should be heard. As a re-elected board member to the Vineland School Board, I promise to continue doing my best and continue to be the voice of the people. My door will always be open and inclusive. I will always listen, and I will continue to put our students first. Thank you to my family and everyone who has supported my candidacy. Thank you.
Mr. Sabrana?
Thank you. This is my 10th year on the Vineland Board of Education, and I am grateful for the support of my colleagues and especially Mrs. Cottisbotty, and my desire this year to serve in a leadership position. To Mrs. Perez and Mr. Harris, you'll probably hear, if you haven't already heard, that serving on the school board is a thankless job. That's not true. When I see our ability to have a positive effect on the learning environment for every child in our district, I feel like I'm making a contribution to our society, to our community, and to the world. So don't believe that, and you'll find that out the first time you get involved in a student activity, to see smiles on kids' faces. Mr. Silva, you already know that. You've been around a while, and you work in public education. But I hope all of you join me in making a promise to use our knowledge acquired from our experience in life and education and whatever to ensure that good decisions are made in the management of this district, that we will be able to fulfill our mandate to provide a positive learning environment for every one of our students. Thank you.
Mr. Yano?
Congratulations and welcome, Mr. Harris and Mrs. Perez. It was a pleasure to meet with you and talk to you last week, to get to know a little bit about you and some of your areas that you're interested in. We have a great board. Also, want to welcome back our, you know, comedian-in-chief, Mr. Silva. You know, he's got lots of jokes, and he's always focused on the kids. So it's a very positive experience when we work with Mr. Silva. So this board has done a lot of great work. We continue to be collaborative and focus on what's best for students, and I'm super excited about what the new year has to bring and offer for us. So again, thank you. Welcome, and thank you to the rest of the board for being here this evening and looking forward to just a awesome, awesome 2025.
Again, welcome to our new board members and to our, to Mr. Silva. To our, I would like to thank you all for coming out tonight. We would like to see more of you coming to the board meetings. It does make, it does make a difference. It does matter to us. We need to hear what your thoughts are. It's nice coming to a board meeting, but it's, you know, 90% of the time, there are zero to maybe five people out there. So please come out. Let us hear your thoughts. We might not always agree with them, or we might agree with you, but, you know, we need to hear what you're thinking. To our staff, our central staff, thank you guys for what you're doing. We have a whole new year to start with. And Mr. Yano, Mr. Mustarel, I'm very, you know, I can't wait to get started. I want to thank my board members for voting their confidence in me, and we're just going to move forward. So with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.